We're ready if y'all are. Mr. Brooks Cobb is gonna open up our meeting over our prayer.
Let us pray. Father God, as we humble ourselves for you this morning, I just want to give you thanks for your love and grace and mercy that you just overwhelm us with every day, dear Lord. I want to lift up these government and elected officials to you this morning, dear Lord, as they tend to the county business this morning, dear. I just pray that you will lead and guide them and as they try to make Union County a better place to live, dear Lord, and they take care of the county business this morning. I want to pray for our law enforcement and all of our first responders, dear Lord, as they go out and put their lives on the line every day to protect people a lot of times they don't even know, dear Lord. I just ask that you'll put a hedge of protection around them. I just pray that everything we do here this morning will glorify you, in Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Let's throw it out with the county administrator items this morning. First one is an inventory of the leasing led with for fiscal year 21 and 22.
Look at your first.
There it is. Motion from Randy and a second from Steve. It's all stuff we've already done throughout the year. All in favor? Motion carries. Randy has the motion.
Is it me or is it hot in here?
Hot.
It's hot. Please don't help him.
You have to pick up.
It's the top one. Turn it down two switches.
Alright, next we've got a holiday proclamation from the governor. Veterans.
Yes.
Veterans, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's holidays.
I'm making a motion. That leads to those days.
Mass soke day.
Veterans Day is this Friday, November 11th, and then Thanksgiving Day will be Thursday, November 24th, and Friday, November 25th. Christmas will be, no, I'm sorry, December 20th, because Christmas Day is on Sunday, but will be off the 23rd, December 23rd, that Friday, and December 26th, on that following Monday. And then observing January 2 for New Year's Day. It's just one day on New Year's. That's correct. So you have Veterans Day, then two Thanksgiving, two Christmas, one New Year's.
Got a motion to approve the, approve holiday motion. Have you had the mo-
Yeah, two hours.
Hell, I had to do, discussed it. I got a motion from Chad. Second from Steve. All in favor?
We need to do it today. Or you make plans, plans out.
Food's gonna be asking? Y'all food's gonna be asking?
I'm gonna be saying, can I come in here and convince? Try and run a meeting there.
Run a meeting there. Organize the event. We need a travel expenses for Tammy Flowers and Lisa Lepone for training and certification, December 6th and 11th. On the motion? Second. Motion. Second from Randy. All in favor? Motion carries. Alright, we've got two quotes on some fans for installation in the fairgrounds arena.
The first one is from Skyblade Fan Company.
Who? You sick, ain't ya?
I'm sorry, yes, I am. Skyblade, S-K-Y-B-L-A-D-E Fan Company?
Turkish?
I don't think so. I'm doubt. For the doctors. You'll know tomorrow, that's right. Okay, for the fans, the total, it lends the fan thing.
So, Skyblades quote, total for two fans, looks like engine bar, LCD touchscreen, weather resistance enclosure, looks like installation cost $24,311.50.
Twenty four what?
Twenty three eleven.
Twenty three eleven? Twenty four.
Three eleven.
Twenty.
Fifty. We got a quote from Tom Barrow Company. Looks like they quoted two standard 24 V fans, just like the other ones. The mount kit, installation, doesn't say anything about weather resistant cover there or the LCD touchscreen, but their total quote is $27,780. $27,780.
Did it say on there the warranty at the end? Didn't you say that in the first part of it? Didn't you say the fire number he played part of it? Play for my fire alarm, give up my files.
Tom Barrow doesn't look like anything in there about warranty, but. Skyblade apparently does have some warrants here.
Hey, Mr. Ken.
Good morning. How you doing?
How you doing, Mr. Ken?
Do I have a motion to approve the low bid? One twenty four thousand, one twenty seven something. One one thousand. I can't find one on the last, on the top one.
What's the low one?
Look on the last page, it's got it all there. Annette took it from her. She stole it from her.
She's bad about that.
Yeah.
One year. Labor's walking. Okay, it's got a ten year, twelve year. Don't they consider the standard bronze silver gold platinum?
That's probably looking like first base.
Probably on the price probably. They ain't gonna pay the color of it as long as it. Make a motion for the low bid. Got a motion from Randy to accept the vote from Skyblade. I second. Chad with the second. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we got to discuss constables annual loss calls payments.
It's the same.
It's what?
It's the same one.
Yeah, so our two constables have submitted identical requests, requesting reimbursement for loss calls in the amount of $4,500 each, which is stated in Mississippi Code Section 25-7-27, subsection 1F, that provides for serving all warrants and other process and attending all trials and state cases in which the state fails in the prosecution to be paid out of the county treasury on the allowance to the board supervisors without itemization, subject however to the condition that the marshal or constable must not have overcharged in collection of fees for calls contrary provisions of the section any ones. So what, so that everybody understands, this is gonna be one of those scenarios, you studied, there's no provision in the statute, there is now, where you have some, the constable goes and serves and the person that is served is not found guilty in a criminal trial, or they're not found, I guess, civilly responsible. And so, you know, if they're found guilty, or if they're found civilly liable, then part of the court cost goes to the constable to pay their fee. These are for the ones where they go out and serve somebody, but the person's not found guilty, or doesn't have to pay the court cost for some reason. So they're asking for, to be reimbursed for the services that they provided for which individuals did not have to pay them because they weren't found guilty or civilly liable.
But it's not necessarily on an individual basis, it's part of like sort of their compensation package now?
Well, I mean, I certainly think that, that the board would be entitled to ask them, you know, how do we come up with this number? Because it doesn't really- Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's reasonable request is, you know, where did you, how'd you come up with this amount? Because they're both identical amounts and so.
Motion to take it under advisement, let's speak a little bit. Got a motion from Steve to take it under advisement. I'll take it. Second from Randy. All in favor? Motion carries. Next we got the board attorney aisle. First being, discuss the proposed agreement for the use of the courthouse and its property.
I think I circulated this to everybody, but for those who don't know, I don't even know how many years it goes back. Randy's been here longer than anybody, but, you know, people have always wanted, people have on occasion asked to use courthouse lawn for events. We know that it's been used for River Fest before, we know it's used for, what, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and do prayer, and that kind of stuff. So, we've had other individuals that have contacted that are interested in, you know, doing things such as an event, a charity event, or a wedding on courthouse lawn, whatever, and so felt it would be appropriate to have an agreement for these people that would ensure that our pretty courthouse lawn is taken care of, that there are, you know, if their stage is put up, we know where they're put up, if their bathroom's put out, we know where they're put out. This is not, the board does not intend to charge any for use of courthouse. It's not about taking monthly, it's just about making sure that the property there, that we put a lot of effort, money into, is preserved in the event somebody wants to use it. And so, if you, you know, if an individual wanted to use the courthouse, and they would have to come and sign one of these agreements, so that we can keep it on file in case there was any problem with their use. But I think every one of y'all's-
Everybody's got an email. We're all good, man. I'm making a motion just through. We have a motion from Randy. Second from Sam. All in favor?
Yeah, probably the board office or here, you know, totally whatever Steve did for everybody.
We got one other item, the board attorney, we were inadvertently sent some money from the state for the Red Hill community. And we need to approve sending it back to the state for it to be reissued to the right person overseas. Yeah.
It's a grant. It's a grant.
But the issue. We really don't have any, if I'm open with the Red Hill community. They're gonna find somebody else to be in charge of that. Alright, where'd you say that agreement would be kept? In case we're-
Probably here and at the board office, just in case, you know, if the board office were for some reason closed, then Annette's office could have copies here too.
We just tell them to go by here or there across the street. Down there. Pick up the agreements and say.
They agreed, they said. Use it for July.
On the Red Hill deal, I had a motion from Randy.
Second is Steve.
Second from Steve. All in favor? Alright, next we got chancery clerk items. First would be the consent agenda, which contains the statement of expenditures for the tax office for October, the statement of expenditures for the sheriff's department and the jail from October, the meal load from October, plane, docket payment for October, the board minutes for October, the road department work schedule for November, the medical examiner statement of fees, ten of those, and also the solid waste register for October. I have a motion to approve the son agenda. Make a motion. Second. Motion from Chad, a second from Randy. All in favor?
John, this is-
Motion carries.
John, this is from the tax office.
Eight section, something big one. I wanna push it.
Yeah.
That was Andrew.
Alright, we're gonna skip to C here. Approval of submission of continuing disclosure statement for the fiscal year 2021, and approved payment of fees, expenses to Butler Snow for their services rendered.
Yes.
Well, it's the payment is for $3,000. This is something they do every year when they prepare the continued disclosures. It's, it was preparation for fiscal year, fiscal year 2021.
Hold back from, sorry, motion. Second. I got a motion from Sam and a second from Chad. All in favor? Motion carries. Next we got a request for use of a county-owned building to serve as a booth pantry in Myrtle. Little building.
Yeah, I said Myrtle.
Building to table.
And it's requested from Myrtle United, this church.
I'm making a motion.
Got a motion from Chad, so, second from Sam. All in favor? Good use of that building.
I don't like that they're assuming that I don't wanna do it today.
It's whole, third whole church, they're involved.
They're heading it up.
Yeah, they're just heading it up.
Next we got confirmation or completion of the 2020 fiscal year Union County audit report.
Pushing that page, we can take, no, but did I, this is just to let you know, yes, and I actually put it on the, and then same, just so you know.
We don't take any action there. So, next would be approval of the chancery clerk court charter. Annette hopefully.
I'm making a motion. Second.
Motion from Chad, a second from Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Moving along to circuit clerk items. Request for election commissioners funding forms, five of those. Motion approved. Second. Got a motion from Randy and a second from Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. The circuit clerk is requesting payment for services as a registrar. Make a motion. Got a motion from Chad. Second, second from Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. Union County EVA and 911. They're requesting attendance for dispatching Ryan Fraser, Jacob Bonnefield, and Shawn Thompson, including a mileage reimbursement for dispatch commercials on suicide calls, November 8th in Jupiter. Motion approved. Look at that, bro. Second. Motion from Randy, a second from Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Now I've got a request for a mileage reimbursement for Mary Morgan Beatty to attend the basic dispatch communications course, November 14th through 18th in Jupiter. I've got a motion, Sam.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Motion carries. Next we got to discuss quotes for 911 signs and for seeing previous quotes that we're seeing here.
Riverside. What's the old one?
Riverside.
We have one from Vulcan for $16,862.30. Sixty eight six two point three, so that's from Vulcan. And this is for signs for county, county ground markers. The up arrows, single arrow, arrows in place of litter, there for sign. The other one's from Riverside, $20,002,13.50. $20,002,13.50.
I'm making a motion. Got a motion from Randy to accept the lowest quote from Vulcan, Sam. I wanna-
How much were yours?
$16,862.
$1,025.
First. I have a second.
I'm second.
That's what I'm saying, who you saying talking? A Sam. Hundreds of them. Two hundred of them.
We got two eighteen on the-
You remember we ordered a motion because we gotta replace them with-
About forty, almost forty and a hundred twenty-five on the place do not live.
Still not the place to know that we put it.
But I got a lot that didn't cover.
I'll have a list.
I'm gonna have the same.
We got a second. This is replacing, I know it's all, we're changing out all the little ones.
That's right.
Maybe some more.
And the ones that he ordered, we sat down and tried to get everything, but I know I got some that I'm missing some.
David and Bynum missed some too. We gotta go back and order some more from them too.
Yeah, but those, those coming with all those coming in, that's what happened, you know. Oh, you didn't order any?
I didn't.
Aw, heck.
We figured he could wait later. Well, we gotta order mine. Well, three days later, it's all double. I got a motion from Randy. Got a second. Second. Second from Sam. All in favor? Don't spend all this money, but it's still- I gotta stop signing it for another day. I know it's been replaced six times, it's up in here for a year. That's the sixth one, I'm gonna keep it up. The one I said's the sixth one.
But you gotta have a look.
We pulled one off, go. I don't know about this time, sometimes, sometimes it's both.
He didn't-
We gotta change it because I got one that's made up inside of a house where it's pulling off, what it's doing. It's probably one of ours.
Said it come from the middle of the county.
Yeah, said it come from the middle.
Yep, they wouldn't change it after.
Said it come from the middle of the county.
But okay, things are wearing.
I got a, I'm spending more twice. That's the second thing we're doing here from last week. Sixteen by and by.
It's ongoing battle, it's true. We'll be having those about the same too, since you turned.
You probably stole some when you, y'all.
I asked Sam to. Steve, find you both, I see. Talk about the legal thing.
But we're done with that one. County engineer. Discuss the request for state aid to add back on your way to the state aid system.
All of those, they asked me, Eli, Eli Bridge, to sit there and say, we can put this on the engine, but that's add to the state aid system. I don't think they'll approve it just to-
I have asked Larry, check the state aid, says we could be added to state aid list.
Well, this is just a form of saying- Send down a request?
Yeah, he sent requests to state aid after we had ran them his way to it. He had, he told me, I called here, so I'm assuming that we got it done.
It's county, but you didn't want to put a point.
Yeah, part of the main thing, they're waiting for it to be in Union County.
Right, and this is the second, this is-
This is just-
What I'm saying, Eli Bridge.
Just that parcel from 203 down to what's sake, mate, that starts again. And that's the parcel. But it needs nothing else right now anyway. If your future's getting with.
So, won't be enough money to do this with.
Before you have to say what you think, what you don't, but if the question, I mean, we're discussing it, yes, I'm all for it.
Do we want to make a, you wanna make a motion to approve it? Do you want to make a motion to approve that going on the state aid?
If I make Liz approve that.
And then approve it from the state. Going, preschool.
I mean, you gotta get my, my aid in.
Well, that's what I was asking.
That didn't really figure it out.
A whole bunch of them.
They really do, but then they're gonna give you a certain amount, you gotta say how you're gonna spend it anyways, and what, most of the worst, or what's order these things. It can be added to the list and we'll cross our grid when it needs some repair.
Second. I got a motion from Randy and a second from Steve. All in favor? Motion carries. Road department, school bus turnaround, two of them. Union County or city?
Actually, it's from the city area here.
Something, it's something.
I don't know if it's new.
Are they renewed?
It's all, I mean.
Those are renewed.
Are they? Okay. Those are renewed, those are.
Yeah, those are.
They're the champs. They just say decent. They're in on caring. That is even, this is on category one six five. Kendra five, Jane Arnold, she has some charity.
Is that a new one or a new one? Well, it's a new one, but it's a.
Kendra three point seven. Kendra two nine five.
Two thousand. One, six.
No, no, I'm sorry.
All.
Yeah, these are, these are for the city school, this, right, this is for the city school, this, that's what they came.
She's not giving them address.
Usually they sound, sometimes it's hard to see, right? Those channels, it's usually they sound, but sometimes hard to read, maybe, they sound, it's hard to, sometimes.
It's just radio, then we will go.
You saw. You would say the city? City school?
I'm shit.
Screw them, son.
She, oh, she did. I'm not a book.
Got a motion from Sam to accept, like, city, Indian County. Second from Randy, all in favor? Motion carries. All right, next, we've got a couple of quotes, first, that's the lighter, third is.
That's rough, that. Careful, now, you have one from Power. Nineteen thousand, six hundred forty dollars. It's for installation, clean installation for a Palazzo. Hydraulics, okay. Anyway, total nineteen six four, and the other one is dribbling equipment, same thing, twenty-two thousand dollars in, twenty-two thousand. Hey, please, it's tough.
Did you ever get a picture of that, Scott?
He said, he said he was gonna come, he gave it to me tomorrow, he can get that. He's out of office. It's just like our limo. Except we go on the mini though.
Four foot.
Four foot. I make a motion, take the little speed, lots of.
One or two, I mean, two pieces of wood, that's a bit old.
Two.
All right, and I've got a motion from Chad to accept the low quote and get two of us. Second. Second, Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. Now, we should have some folks, they lay in pot mix asphalt on County Route fifty, what?
We have one from Roberts Paving, twenty-one thousand dollars, it's for three hundred fifty tons of asphalt, at sixty dollars per ton. The other's from James A. Hodges Construction. Total's twenty-four thousand, one hundred fifty dollars, and it is three hundred fifty tons, and they're sixty-nine dollars a ton. Twenty-four thousand, one hundred fifty, and Roberts is twenty-one thousand.
I make a motion to accept Robert. Both feet.
We got a motion from Chad. Second. Sam. All in favor? Motion carries.
All in favor.
Next, we've got a, uh, change of order for County Route one, potentially a reduction in the cost. Five thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars and four cents less than what we approved.
That's just the difference in what, uh, the estimated cost was and what they spent it.
Do you have a change order?
No, we've, we got purchase.
And pretty soon.
Come in less, fifty-two seventy-eight.
Yeah.
All right, uh, motion to approve the change of.
Got a motion.
Second. Uh, Sam, second from Randy, all in favor? Motion carries. There's another change of order, County, County Route one ninety-eight, increase of price, the project cost, two thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty cents, assuming it's an overage on materials.
Now, we did a, just a purchase, had to do an additional purchase order. That first one, it just came in less than the purchase order, and that one was, we had to do an additional purchase order. I, I don't know why that's over on Randy, did he, you or Scotty, I guess it was just, took more asphalt, what they, yeah, it took a little more.
It took more material.
They estimated. A little bit more, I, I hope.
Motion approved. Got a motion from Randy. Second from Sam, all in favor? Motion carries. We got a quote on a truck on state contract for the road management.
It is Kirk Auto World, forty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars.
He's gonna get torn.
I ain't walking that.
What's it?
Forty-two thousand, one hundred twenty-seven dollars.
They give you a time very long, huh?
I don't know, Tammy got them long, so.
I'm sure. Got a motion to approve the truck purchase on state contract.
I'm gonna die. You got state contract for us, didn't it?
So, second from, from Sam. All in favor? Motion carries. Uh, we got to approve our advertising for annual fees to be material.
All material, five hundred, with asphalt, cold mix, with the hot mix, this is what we do every year, we just take, uh, just take Florida.
I have a motion to approve of bid sheet.
Now, is this, is this by getting me on the? A motion?
Yeah.
Yes. We'll see what they, we'll see what's next.
I just, I know we've got mess before, and got these other companies that bring us a motion, and they couldn't get it here, one point, we get it again. What if you do a reverse office? That's what they'll have.
This, we're just advertising, we're just program advertising, and they have to have everything in that says, this will be.
My point is, it's pretty cheaper, and we can't get it to any kind of.
Yeah, but you won't resist it.
State law. I know that, I know that, I'm just making sure that we done this, and then we couldn't do reverse office.
This is authorized reverse office.
Listen.
I'm resisting.
Yeah.
I got a motion from Randy. Second, second from Steve, all in favor?
We're gonna throw that one here, I'll think they'll be good. More than a little. I'd have a little, just lose a bit. They got, get them here. That's gonna be for, that's all.
All right, Sheriff's Department, uh, Steve is requesting travel expenses for Baron Baker and Chris Chapel to pick up a visionary in Colorado.
Yeah, we had him banned, bonded out of jail with COVID, bonded and, uh, never showed up to court. Circuit judge issued a warrant for him, he was placed on NCIC and found in Durango, Colorado. So, we had to have four meetings, quite a while, and so we had to go get him. Uh, Chris Chapel and Baron Baker went and picked him up, we've already received, uh, payment back, it's been turned in for COVID bonding. Uh, paid the total amount for, uh, travel and, and everything to go, to go get the guy in Durango back. They, they done it, we done, already got reimbursed for it, it's just a loss into that, we.
Why do we need to do that? They paid for.
Here, we need to prove this? We just putting it on the minutes, it was emergency.
Round up, to prove.
Have to do it the next four meet.
Got a motion.
It's after the last four meet, one two.
Yes.
Second, second from Chad. Rebirth. This is just having it and file on the minutes.
Done, done it.
All in favor?
Didn't cost anything.
Cause I can think, I get. Did they, ran by the boat? Randy made motion, Chad second, everybody approved. Request for a vehicle to be added to the list of marked and unmarked vehicle.
I think there's a state statute that says that, it's gotta be, it's wrong to manage the, vehicles and, uh, bed numbers that is marked, and the ones that's unmarked, and the reason why they're unmarked, so that's the list.
This is the loop. Uh, do we have a motion to approve this list of Sheriff's Department vehicle? Second. Second. Got a motion from Sam, second from Steve, all in favor? Motion carries. Also got a request for new part-time employment, uh, effective November seventh.
Talk to it.
Part-time employment, make a motion. Second.
That is, uh.
Motion from Chad.
We have had, uh, in the past, Mr. Louis Beck Alexander, that was on, uh, state highway litter program, taking inmates out, picking up trash, his help has been failing for a long time now, and he is not, not gonna be able to, to help in that job, so, we were fortunate enough to find Mr. Girl, and he agreed to do it. I think we can get started tomorrow, picking up trash on state.
Good. Got plenty to do. Plenty of jobs. All right, I got a motion from Chad and a second from Randy, all in favor? Motion carries. Next, we got the surrender tag list for October. It's an easy one, isn't it? Now, a motion to approve. Steve made a motion in second. She's all in favor. All right.
All right, I didn't have, more, that does not require action, but I'm like the sheriff, it needs to be mentioned, um. I have in my budget, a company that prints taxes, um, we pay the postage, the printing, that's just a third company. But, um, we change companies, and so I just need to let you know that I have an agreement with them for sixty days, um, to make sure that we're satisfied with their products. Um, I also have a simple agreement, not a contract, but a simple agreement, with a company that does our credit cards. The credit card readers that we have, that company charge was going up, I found another company that kept it for our taxpayers at two point three five percent. But they also provided a kiosk, which can take payments in the office, but they don't have to stand in line to have contact with a deputy collector. So, that is also an agreement that I have in my office. Um, and the third one is for personal property payments. Um, I think we discussed it last year, and I'm going to go with American Financial Services, that will collect those that have been on the insolvent's list for several years. Um, there is no charge to the county or to my office, it will be to those, um, business owners, that that additional fee will go to them. But I did need to make you aware of those changes in the office, but it's not action that's required by y'all.
So, good, thank you. Volunteer fire departments discuss, discuss quotes to replace a transmission on a water truck, volunteer fire department.
We have two quotes, one for water truck and tractor. Eight thousand, forty-one dollars, ninety-nine cents, eight oh four one point nine. The other is shuttles, S H E T T L E S, decent service. Their total is eight thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars, eight one six seven. Please look at.
This is for North Haven, engine two, of the, of North Haven Volunteer Park. Make a motion to approve a little bit. Does that, are we gonna get it down, but?
Just drive it.
Just drive it?
Yeah, it's just flipping, after you work for a little while, you'll wheel drive it back down there.
We got a motion from Randy to accept the load, load, which is from Waters. Steve with a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Veterans Office, said they ask for approval of travel expenses for October twelfth, in Malox. Now, a motion to approve that. Got a motion from Sam, a second from Randy, all in favor? All in here, I think we need to have a short executive session.
I make a motion for one.
I got a motion from Chad. Enter into the session, Randy with the second. All in favor?
All in favor, they slipped it.
Motion carries.